All right, guys, we're gonna keep the meeting off. First order of this, sorry, is calls of order, and all members are present tonight. Uh, next order will be roll, uh, I'm sorry, roll call, then pleas of the lead.
My pleasure. This is the United States of America, and it's a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In fact, we got a little bit before our last month.
Oh, right.
So, uh, uh, see, just to have any changes or additions to the agenda?
No change.
All right, approval of the, the prior, or the meeting agenda, so everybody has a chance to look through the agenda. We have five percent items and five regular items. Any questions or comments on the agenda? All right, we have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Got motion to approve the agenda, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and second to approve, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, approval of the meeting agenda. Next stop will be approval of the prior minutes from the December eleventh meeting. If I have any comment, corrections, or on the minute. All right, hearing none, we have a motion.
Motion to approve the December eleventh, uh, minutes.
Motion to approve at second.
Second.
Motion second to approve, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, approved. Uh, individuals who are either agenda eyes, we'll get that, just second public comment, it's the time we allow any of us in public that wants to speak on anything, you're repaying the lady, or anything on the agenda, be able to come speak forward. Uh, we have a sign in chief, uh, if anyone wants to speak. All right, without seeing anyone coming forward, uh, but we will move on to our regular agenda. Consent agenda, we have five items on a consent agenda, these are ones where we can review these as a group. But we'll let see just, uh, do a quick, uh, review of all these five, summary.
Uh, in summary, I feel really good about our process now, uh, of getting, getting these bonds looked at, making sure the city, uh, is accepting, uh, complete work done by the developers, uh, through the public services team, public works, stormwater, wastewater, they've, they've been really thorough. So, I feel really good about, uh, our process, not that I haven't in the past, but I feel really good about everything I have before you know. Uh, I'll work to get you a, a, a more thorough breakdown of what these numbers represent, you know, coming, we, we've got the, that process worked out with the, with the bond sheets, the show, like, this reflects the sidewalks, the asphalt, uh, curbing, street lights, et cetera. So, um, like I said, uh, I can go through one by one, uh, but, you know, like I said, public services looks at all properties, uh, for reduction and/or increase.
Okay, now, we have three increases based on your standard fifteen percent and this here reductions. Okay. Any comments or questions about these, and the staff of the board did list those bond amounts. No comments or questions, we have a motion, or consent agenda items, one through five.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion second to approve, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six, uh, Herbert Dale Broderick requests recommendation to the Board Mayor Alderman, two parts, one to annex seven three point two acres on State Route seventy-six, and then rezone that property from Ag A two to C two. Before we kick this off, this is a public hearing, there's anyone who wants, requesting to speak on this item?
Adam, I'm Steve Arce, I'm here to represent Dale.
Okay.
Tonight. He's uptown, so he has no income.
Okay.
Y'all have any questions, I'm not sure I can answer, but I'll try.
Okay.
Um, with, uh, with this property, Mr. Mr. Broderick owns, uh, parcels one thirty and one twenty-nine, with the cross from White House here. Uh, they were annexed in, uh, several years ago, uh, they're currently in zone C two, uh, he's annexed in this piece, uh, as you see with the star on it, uh, he's just, uh, he bought that piece and, uh, he figured, you know, annexed it in, and it's on the C two along with his other pieces of property. Uh, he didn't have any plans to do anything immediate, uh, with it, so I have no concept plan or site plan, uh, other than just to let you know, he's, uh, doing it for future potential use to align with, uh, his existing property.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, also, it, uh, this goes back to actually when your days earlier, uh, when you were a miscarriage, and now with Mr. Broderick, and he wanted to annex it, and like, what, a hundred acres of land there. Uh, him and I had a couple of conversations about this particular piece, uh, actually before he, he bought it, and then he went ahead and just decided to buy it and annex it in. He, he just wants to have a little bit more road frontage along, uh, along seventy-six, this acreage is already torn down, the house and the barn, that was their old house, and so, he just wants to clean it up. Uh, he's had, the folks come to reach out to him, but he's not, he wants to make sure it goes to, you know, to good cause for White House, he definitely wants to be commercial, he's, since we have enough residential on, uh, that, that's what he spoke to, probably not about it, so, just wanted to pass it along a few.
All right. This will be a recommendation to the Board Mayor Alderman, they would make the determination, should give them a recommendation. Oh, again, if anyone, no one, just make sure before we close the public hearing on this, someone wants to speak on the following. Okay, all right, anyone hear any comments or questions?
I mean, I, I'm, I think commercial out in, in this area is good, I, I just, my concern is that seventy-six, it's, it's gonna be, who knows how long before T-Dot, you know, widens that road, and for us to set something up where somebody could come in and drop the loads, or whatever, out there. I feel like, I, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm not a fan of creating a problem and then waiting for T-Dot to come and fix it later. Um, I'd rather at least have a plan in place that we know this, this road's gonna get taken care of, and when, and then maybe... So, not, not opposed to the use at all, I just, that road is such a mess right now.
What is the situation of the city limits on the road, is it, to the school?
Yeah, we, I mean, uh, you can't see the red outline, but it, with the city owns, uh, in front of, uh, the edge of this, this property, the city owns the roads in front of that, within, it, it's county road, uh, on both sides.
Is there a change in that, see, then?
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask you a question? As, as it stands right now, if Dollar General came in and said, even without annexing the property, can we put a Dollar General here?
They could, on the purchase of the property, that's owned commercial, uh, this just adds road frontage to what he currently owns, uh, and he also owns a piece, uh, on Union Road that would give access to, to Union Road. Uh, but, I mean, they couldn't just blankly come in without having to adhere to the traffic study, um, and turn lanes and things like that, that would be required, uh, because of the known issue of seventy-six, so...
So, I have a question, so, I know Thursday, there's a study session to discuss traffic, is this area in that study session?
I don't think so, is it?
Just, uh, Pleasant Grove Road and, uh, and seventy-six is one of the, uh, projects we've identified that we're working on.
But if you're talking about seventy-six as, as a whole, uh, that's, that's the state?
Yeah.
Yeah, state town, uh, yeah, that, okay.
Yes.
So, is this an all of, of part, so we have two parts of this, one is to, um, break, people are breaking the city, the other part is just we're going to rezone it.
If you annex it, if, if, when he comes in, it's, comes in as a base owner of R twenty, um, so that's, that's the request to be C two, resident coming in at, at the base zone.
Okay, so right now, agricultural, outside the city.
Correct.
Whether it's in the city, it's residential.
Yeah.
But he wants change to commercial.
Correct.
There's no sewer there either, so they would have to extend sewer, I think, from seventy-six and D.C. Road area, I think that's where the closest connection they would have, without crossing the street, trying to connect to the high school, which I don't think that's a good idea.
Right.
So, they're, they're gonna have to extend, eventually have to extend sewer down there, and with some road improvements.
Yeah, anything that comes with, i- if it was something big, with, would have to be road improvements, uh, um...
So, is there a sewer line now to the two properties already owned?
No.
Did you know?
No, it, it's, the closest would be at seventy-six and, uh, I think right there at Union Road, is where our...
Close, right.
That, do, do we bring it all the way down to Pleasant Grove Road? Connection there.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Um, I, I'm concerned about the potential for the, the, the change of zoning for the, there's a quite extensive list of things that could potentially go up in that place, and when you factor in the location and the well-being of the students, it's already a very high-volume area for traffic. And if we added now pedestrian traffic to cross, to get to whatever business could potentially go there in the future, I think we should maybe have a little bit more insight before we start adding additional vehicle traffic to what could be pedestrian traffic across from students.
I'm just pointing out that... Any, any future, you know, land use would have to be improved by this board in any way, so it's, if, if they wanna put whatever commercial they wanna put on there, a, a site plan would have to be approved, traffic study would have to be done, so you, you have a lot more, a lot more punches at this, I guess, in the future.
The caveat, that is, it's a salt of a farmer.
Right.
Which has to let it go in.
Let it go. Yes, except, like I said, like, like, say, whatever improvements you all would want down the roads to make that work, based on the traffic study.
I will point out, though, this is already, it's a piece that, next to it, adjacent, this is just seven acres, the additional, that red is already commercial there.
How many acres is that? It's close to thirty acres.
Both parcels together?
Yeah, I think it's close to thirty, maybe a little less, a little less in there.
There's seven point three plus is existing.
Yeah, that's the thirty.
That's the piece crossing the high school.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, when you go up in, um, Greenbrier, and you see the kids trying to cross from the high school to the Dollar General, it's, that's my reflection here, and I would not want to duplicate or replicate that in any fashion. Not, not for students, no.
I mean, is it typical, when they do a rezoning, that they tell us what they're going to do, or is it?
Not necessarily.
For, 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 but not for base zone, uh, I mean, if he, if he had something immediate that he was trying to do, he would have a concept plan, but as I, as I talked to him, he just was doing this just to kinda administrate it, like he did his other parcels, like I said, you'd be reiterating, and it's already commercial, so, uh, this seven acres.
Right, and it already have a road for any, so I mean, the only concern would be, like you said, if there's a Dollar General road crosser, and he can already do that now, with what property he has right there, already in the city.
That's why I drove it to commercial, then.
I don't think that's helping, he's looking to zoom there, but I'm not saying he wouldn't, but I'm not saying that's what he's looking to do at this time, but...
And we tell applicants when they apply that, you know, it's their right to apply and do it, but it's not a guarantee that it'll get approved, so...
I mean, the way it is right now, would he be, they would put a gas station there?
Yes.
He is eligible to do that?
Mm-hmm.
On, on these two parts, none of them.
Yes.
Yes.
But not only one we're talking about.
None of them, well, five acres, six acres, and he's trying to get, get added to it, but the rest of it, he certainly has the ability to do that, and it's, it's a C two now, right?
Yes.
So, if you zone this as C two, and then sold the whole thing together, all three sections, I mean, that's a very large commercial structure you're speaking about, and so it would monopolize the cross front for the school, which is at this point, not part of that package. And I, I think it's more advantageous for the school not to have such a large package, zone C two across the street.
Ship of sale to some extent, with the, the two pieces already there, but, um...
That's roughly eighty percent of it's already that way.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think adding the seven acres is gonna really impact the overall, what's already there, coming in.
That comes clear, we do have a representative here, if there's any questions, um, I think pretty clear, then it's...
I agree, I mean, he really doesn't have any plans, right, same right there, it's just trying to, he's purchased his property, he's just trying to add it, that, well, it was already in place, so...
He's saying no plans right now, does he have any kind of timelines, or are you gonna do something with it?
Uh, no, ma'am, and like y'all stated, I mean, uh, roads would have to be improved, sewer would have to be improved, uh, there'd be a lot of obstacles to get to the point where, you know, somebody could develop the property. And he's had that, that piece of property, he's been zoning several years now, I don't remember, two thousand, remember, Adam, it was two thousand ten?
Someone that down, we know that.
I was saying something about, right? Yeah.
And I think, uh, this is seven point three acres, is kind of dropping the bucket for what he already owns here, I would be concerned if he like, obviously rezone for residential, because then we have a lot more cars coming.
Yes, that's what I'm concerned with.
Commercial keeps it down to certain, um, for mom, I think it's less impacted.
Right, and I talked to him about that, and he definitely says that's not something he wants, I mean, we have another one that's probably coming your way in the next couple of months, and, and it, it's out there off of, uh, off of, uh, Bill Moser, and we're like, no. I mean, I, why would we, why would we put another residential plant out there, it'd be, not something I don't think I would wanna see in the city, but, of course, the planning commission, or, and they're all gonna make those decisions, but, uh, this, we're trying to stay away from residential. Even though T-Dot has residential on the school, but, you know, that's, that's, we're trying to go with something.
Like, I think he would, to cause them to cross, where they're not now, directly.
So, converting it to C two, so say we approve for it to go to C, or recommend to go to C two, is there any kind of time limit of which he can try to convert all this land back to residential, or?
We would have to...
Just have to say C, C two.
Yeah, that would have to be, first, once he gets a C two zoning, he can't change his zoning without it coming back, before planning commission back, before the Board Mayor Alderman, again, public hearing, the whole process, it takes quite a few... That's the reason he ended up buying the property, because the gentleman, he was buying it from, I guess he needed to move on it a lot faster than what, than what our, the frequent normal process is, and so that's the reason he went and bought it, and, and then, he thought he tried to panics it again, and zoning it, that's the only reason he's doing it, I mean, it, um, you know, industrial wouldn't be very good there either, so, trying to, what would be the best use of zoning across from the school? You look at, we have residential, industrial, commercial.
Right.
Seemed like commercial just seemed like a little bit easier to go with, and certainly, like, see, no development, but, but commercial's better than, than, than the other, any options.
And we would have the ability to, to make them, make the road improvements.
Absolutely.
Put in pedestrian-friendly crosswalks, and the schools across the street would wanna be, cause, so, we can do all that when he comes in for site plan approval, right?
Right, just like, I mean, and you all know this, I mean, when we went through the whole process with Loves, I mean, it was, it was by use, and we, boy, boy, we fight them hard, but, but they gave in and gave us a lot of extras, they put in a couple of traffic signals, they issued at the interstate, and wanted to try their place, they extended the D.C. court, made it our new entryway into the industrial park, they did Loves Lane, I mean, they did about everything but build us a dog park, I think, I mean, everything we asked for, the mayor asked for, other than trying to get them to go out of town, um, they did all this. So, I mean, depending on what they wanna do, and what they wanna put there, I mean, this board, and, and, and Board Mayor Alderman, they have a lot of power in every garden.
I mean, it makes sense, it, it turns into commercial.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, yes.
It banks right up to it.
Yep.
And... I just don't live out there, and I know that there's a lot of traffic on that road, right now. But residential would be more, it would, residential would be, but even that seven acres, residential would be, yeah, I know, you got commercial, you got a lot of people coming somewhere to do business, somewhere, yeah, but you have different hours, and you have different, it's just, I think you have more anyway, yeah.
That's something to discuss. May I, before we go for a motion?
One quick question, so, just playing this out for my application, we approve it, we recommend for it to be approved to commercial, it's all packages one, if he decides to sell it down the road, and that future buyer decides to go and try and make it residential, it has to go through the same process, okay?
Yes, sir, it does, yes, and, and go back to your transportation question, I, the, uh, T-Dot released their ten-year, their, a ten-year plan, that never seen one of these before, but they did, uh, even though seventy-six widening is on the Improve Act, which was a, a gasoline tax that was approved by the public years ago, uh, and, and by law, our project is in that list, it's not even on their ten-year project list.
You're right.
Uh, it's not, and, and, uh, so, for whatever reason, it's not, and we tried hard, we worked really, really hard to get that promoted, and it's just not. So, I think what'll happen is along seventy-six corridor there is, improvements will be made as we go, like Speedway going in, uh, they're have to put an, an extended turn lane to get into their property.
Right.
You know, we control, uh, a lot of their access points, you know, they love to have three, four, five access points on, on the roads, and we, we control how many they can have, uh, we've worked closely with T-Dot, and, because it was at the state route, and making sure that anything we put along that state route has to be their, their acceptance too, so, um...
And it'd be the same with this one, I mean, we could...
Absolutely.
Widen the road, put in a turn lane, put in, yeah.
Put in a large commercial, let's say he puts in, uh, new shopping center, dock stores, and that's what I think he'd, he'd like to see happen there.
Sure.
They definitely would, would want to put traffic stimulation out there, lining up probably with the school.
Yep.
Thank those improvements, uh, uh, I think that's, that's, our part procedures, and then when these folks come to see us, they were like, you know, commercial, industrial, or residential? We, we know with this board, and, and I know with my Board Mayor Alderman, their, their direction towards this is, let's stop the residential. Y'all done good, I mean, only thirty, thirty single-family homes in a year, that's pretty good, with the way the city's been growing, so, I'm pretty proud of that, so, commercial, uh, or residential, we don't have the agriculture, so, if they can't come in to that, we just don't have that.
I will comment that Mr. Kelly called me today, uh, just, uh, he wanted me to get it on the record, that, you know, uh, he, he, you know, if it's owned for it, he's okay, he's just, and I told him, there was no plans to do anything right now, he just wanted to express his concerns about any development flooding, uh, his property.
Well, they had a, a count for water runoff and all that.
Not right now, he just wanted me to make that comment.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, recommend to the Board Mayor and Alderman, uh, to approve this request and approve annexation.
We have a motion to approve the items, recommendation to the Alderman, that we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion second, we're gonna do a show of hands, I guess, if it might be close?
Sure.
So, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Oh, nothing. Need to show hands, that's wrong, huh? Uh, recommend, have them, I recommend to the Board Mayor and Alderman.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, item number seven, uh... How do you pronounce this, see, this other?
McFlonery, I don't remember. And I know they're here, uh...
It was the capital I, it was a address, but... Uh, it's a site plan approval for a twenty thousand square foot, uh, industrial building on Union Road, property is on, I want a lot of industrial, all right, please.
Uh, this is a, uh, company wanting to locate from Nashville, the White House, uh, we've worked with them, I think since November, uh, to, uh, get everything squared away to get a little planning commission, uh, their staff has been really diligent with me, basically, get everything squared away. Um, they make glass panels, uh, and I don't have any power points for some of the things they've done, like LSU Tiger Stadium, um, and I'm sure you guys could maybe speak to what you guys, uh, you...
We, 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 some of them, small hotels down in Nashville, we don't really get into the real big tall stuff, you see, down there, we stick with the small office buildings, four, five square... There's a lot of renovations, like I said, uh, LSU has done eighteen million, maybe, window renovations, Alabama, we've done six or seven, UD, we've done quite a few, the process is there, some more, we see them, um, we do do a lot of stuff in Nashville, uh, most, like I say, most of the office buildings. A lot of our guys live in White House, so, made pretty...
How many boys do you have?
Question about boys?
How many boys do you have?
Uh, not forty, we've probably three or four in, and all of them come to the office, yeah, some of them don't come to the office, I mean, come to the office, probably, they probably have about ten, and they, on the average, doesn't have, everybody else works on the site, wherever, projects are.
So, it's commercial, window glass?
Yes.
Um, so, we looked at the site plan, um, they weren't required to attract traffic, because there's limited, uh, limited use with, with traffic, uh, entering to the site, uh, we're looking at construction plans, they're almost approved, so they'll be ready for building permit, uh, in the next couple of months, next month or so.
So, is this the actual manufacturing part of it, or the warehouse and office part of it, I'm following?
There's been some warehouse and office part, um, we do manufacture some stuff, and get a lot of the, what they call storefront, on the, like, little gas station storefronts and stuff like that, and we get that, just long lengths, and cut it up, glass-wise, and bring the glass in, proof out, uh, that's basically what it is, and get it organized and take it to the jobs.
Comment, Mr. Kelly, on this property as well, uh, told him to be aggressive, make sure this property wasn't flooded, run off on this, this site as well.
I think he's going through a big share of ponds, a few, uh, ponds, a few, yeah.
War Jones' operation now, it, it downtown?
It is downtown, actually.
Okay, and you're gonna close that, come here, is this a...
Yes, we need to sell that building, and pay for that one up here, or, like, what, a half acre there? And we're going, this is five acres, I think the building's gonna take about two and a half of it, between the building and parking lot, the other half will just be, loaned or whatever, or left to grow or whatever, okay? We have a rec and, you know, I, so, like, when you walked into those type of glass panels and the foyer, that you walked into, that what you did, that type of work, this'll be right inside the building, we're gonna do, okay?
We have any questions or comments on site plans, we move on. All right, we have a motion, yes?
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Motion to approve the site one, we have a second?
Second.
Motion second to approve, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Item number eight, Legacy Farms, Phase Three, uh, request final flat approval for one hundred and three single-family lot, this is on suburban, business, a plenty of development, attention road, is this the last?
Yeah, we'll just back to the phase. Um, there were no changes to, uh, difference from the final master development plan?
That's a big phase.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, like you said, this was a master plan project, this is consistent with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think there are other phases for about this size, too.
Oh, really?
Uh, there's three, over three hundred, so...
Remember oh eight, I should do ten for lots, look like, not the huge, so, it's might not think the same.
Jeff, of course, I'll give you a question, then.
Okay.
Like a jet.
No, I can sit down. I can, we can, we can, we can, we can, we can. All right, any comments or questions about this? All right, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Second, motion, second to approve, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number nine, this is the parks and others, Phase Three approach, Phase Three B, uh, request and recommendation to the Board Mayor and Alderman to accept the park subdivision from the Street B, all right, Steve?
We recently accepted, uh, three A, this is, um, extension to that, complete the Phase Three, uh, public services, uh, wastewater, stormwater, all have, uh, looked at and are ready to accept and go into the maintenance phase.
All right.
Since they iterate the maintenance phase, ten percent of the total bond, uh, so, we'll have that on file for a year, anything break?
All right, so this is a recommendation from our, uh, Public Works Department, that's fake, it is, if there are any questions or comments on this? All right, we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second? Motion... Motion second to approve, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item ten, this is a discussion item, so if you're not a action item, but Steve, do you wanna kick it?
Um, you guys aware of, uh, Noel Palmer's, where the machine shop is? Uh, that has been in the city, I think, before the city was built. Uh, when zoning was enacted, I think, uh, whomever was growing, drawing the map, drew a box around where the, the footprint of the site was that. Then necessarily consequence zoning, I don't know how, what happened. But, uh, since, uh, the new owners purchased it, they resubdivided the property. And the house that sits, uh, just to the west of the site is our twenty, so the, the property owners, they're being taxed for the entire parcel being commercial. So they wanted to, uh, do the right thing and, you know, rezone it. Uh, but in, in looking at it, even if we rezone it, you know, uh, the commercial, the, the C two, the base, there's a lot of, you know, uh, uses that they could do on C two. So my recommendation after, uh, looking at it on an order to talk to the folks was to do a commercial PUD limited. Uh, they didn't actually know what they wanted to do with the site and, you know, they kick out ideas when people don't know. So I recommend they get a project manager, uh, sit down and before, before they come to us for, with a commercial PUD, they'd have to have an actual plan, and so that actual plan would, would, would limit, uh, you know, what they could do. Uh, and I highlighted in the, in the, in this packet for you guys what that limited use would be. Uh, but again, it's already a commercial, they're being taxed for a commercial, uh, property, so they wanna, you know, they, they wanna get together. They, they were open to what, what I proposed to them, so, uh, look for that this to come, I don't know when, but, uh, in the, in the near future, uh, for them to come with that commercial, uh, PUD light, which we don't currently have a PUD light, but we have it in a zoning ordinance, uh, which is good, send there as an option for them to do so. I just wanted to bring that, bring this to you, uh, because it had been on the agenda as a rezoning. Valerie and, uh, her team, they did some research to see if there were any restrictions of when this was, uh, you know, zoned that way. And we couldn't find anything. Just came to the conclusion it's been that way since forever, so. That's all I had on this.
It seems like that area, they'd use it for their parking, storage, probably as long as the building's been there.
Yeah.
But it perhaps brings up questions about non-conformity anyway, so yeah, it seems a planning development, plan base. It would give us commission control.
Yeah.
It's worth that, you know, you'd hate for that hold be. There's some use that you probably don't want in that neighborhood.
Like, uh, yeah, like a storage unit or something like that, bulk storage, things like that. Uh, so I'm, I'm comfortable with, uh, with my recommendation for them to do that, so. So they should, they should be comfortable for you. In fact, one of the guys that owns this, if you know, if you're going west on seventy-six, just past the, the Southern Service Gas Station at White House with the four, four rent sign, he owns that. He lived in, uh, Orchard Park, he does landscaping, nursery, uh, I think he had the nice turn white house, from what people said. But he owns, he owns that house, he, he, uh, then he bought this with his partner, he is that own, they run Holy Cow Down in Hendersonville. Uh, so they really wanna, um, do something with the building, uh, didn't know what, so we'll see, uh, what they come up with.
I think still having it non-conforming, wide open, some of the protections there, it did have a plan at the time.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments on that?
So we plan for them to come to us in the next near future with what you suggested that they do.
Yeah.
All right. Do you have any other comments, anything tonight, when we're done with the regular agenda? All right, we have a motion to adjourn?
No motion to adjourn.
Motion, second, all in favor? All right, sure.